All right. I'm gonna go ahead and call the regular DeKalb City Council meeting of March 11th to order. Roll call, please.
Cesada.
Here.
Larson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
McAdams.
Here.
Verbic.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Mayor Barnes.
Here.
A present.
All right, Agenda Item B, Pledge of Allegiance. We have Captain Hy-Vee slash Captain Flame to lead us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You bet, sir. Thanks, Shadow. All right, moving on to Agenda Item C, Approval's Agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Roll call, or any comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Cesada.
Here. Or yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
A I.
All right, the agenda has been approved. Moving on to Agenda Item D, Presentations. First, we have a proclamation honoring the Voluntary Action Center on its 50th anniversary. So, whereas the Voluntary Action Center was incorporated in 1974 as a volunteer clearinghouse with a mission of matching volunteers to needs in the community, after becoming aware of a lack of access to services in the community for seniors and persons with disabilities, VAC began providing door-to-door transportation services with one van and several volunteer drivers. VAC provided 7,111 rides in that first year of operation alone. And whereas, in 1982, the city of DeKalb awarded a Section 18 grant, later known as Section 5311, for $117,661 supporting VAC and Husky Line services. And whereas, in 1986, DeKalb County awarded VAC a grant from the Illinois Department of Transportation to build a transit facility. Meanwhile, the FOOD, Food Meals on Wheels, agency joined VAC in 1987 to help improve coordination among senior providers in the county. The new transit facility was completed in 1988, allowing VAC to consolidate its administrative and operations under one roof for the first time. And whereas, by 1990, VAC had coordinated and provided 1 million rides for residents of DeKalb County. And whereas, in 1991, VAC completed construction of the central kitchen facility at their transit offices, which allowed for rapid growth and expansion of services that continues to this day. And whereas, by 1992, VAC had documented 3 million rides. And whereas, the city of DeKalb was designated as an urbanized area after the 2001 census. And whereas, by 2003, VAC had expanded its operations of Meals on Wheels into LaSalle County. And whereas, in 2004, the city of DeKalb received federal funding through the Section 5307, and DeKalb County became the 5311 grantee. VAC became the operator for both systems. And whereas, the city of DeKalb began receiving downstate operative Operating Assistance Programs funds in 2012, which provides the lion's share of operating funding VAC receives to carry out their mission. And whereas, the city of DeKalb, VAC, and Northern Illinois University began working together to restructure several TransVAC and Husky Line bus routes in order to provide a better coordinated and on-time bus route system for the DeKalb metropolitan area. At the completion of the transportation study, the Transit Development Plan was published and a coordinated public transit fare system was developed. These changes became effective in August 2018. And whereas, in 2021, VAC responded to the pandemic by implementing unprecedented growth in its Meals on Wheels programs and instituting new policies and practices to ensure the safety of clients and the public. And whereas, VAC continues as the rural transportation provider for DeKalb and Kendall Counties. Now therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, Mayor of the city of DeKalb, does hereby honor and congratulate VAC on the celebration of their 50th anniversary and applaud their ongoing commitment to provide services that address the basic transportation and nutrition needs of this community and wish them much continued success in the future. Can we get a round of applause for VAC? Counsel, I'd love to get a picture with the VAC team, if that's all right? We can all come down. The whole VAC team. Others? Yeah. That's awesome. Oh, that helps. That's a number.
All right, and three, two, one.
We'll have another one here in a second, too. All right, then, we have a second proclamation. Transit Driver Appreciation Day, March 18th, 2024. So this is, whereas, National Transit Employee Appreciation Day was established in 2009 to recognize efforts of transit workers across the United States. And whereas, public transit is a necessity for our community. And whereas, the city of DeKalb Public Transit operates as a partnership between the city of DeKalb, the city of Sycamore, town of Cortland, and Northern Illinois University, providing 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week transit service to help our communities and the university meet our transportation sustainability and equity goals. Whereas, transit employees work hard each day to help transit users access jobs, healthcare, school, community services, and many other personal, social, and civic opportunities. And whereas, transit employees start their days before the sun rises and finish them long after the sun is set, including working weekends and on or around holidays, while many of us are spending time with family and friends. Whereas, in addition to meeting stringent safety requirements, transit employees must demonstrate customer service, patience, empathy, and understanding to creating a welcoming and inclusive environment for community members and visitors. And whereas, communities across the United States observe National Transit Employee Appreciation Day each year on March 18th to recognize transit operators' dedication, hard work, and the essential services they provide. Now therefore, I, Cohen Barnes, Mayor of the city of DeKalb, Illinois, do hereby encourage all citizens to recognize not only our local transit employees, but those nationwide, not only on March 18th, but year-round for their contributions. Let's give a round of applause for all our transit employees. All right. Three, two, one. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate you coming out. And you don't have to say anything. Thanks, Ryan. Always a great way to start a meeting. All right, so moving on to Agenda Item E, Public Participation. First, we have Derek Van Bureau. And as a reminder, we have three minutes. I think there's a timer on the screen.
When I spoke at the January 4th, 2024 special meeting, I gave an update on McAdams' eviction trial. He had told the court at the previous hearing that he was meeting with four legal services representing him. However, at his trial, he was representing himself. He told the court that he was meeting with his new attorney in a few days. The court ordered a continuation for damages. As you may recall, McAdams alleged that the loan debt was skimmed from the rent. From invoices provided by the landlord's attorney in an affidavit for attorney fees, it appears that McAdams' supposed attorney did not respond. Furthermore, on the day of the trial continuation, neither McAdams nor his attorney showed up. Maybe McAdams realized it might not be prudent to make false statements in a trial. Recently, the judgment was modified to almost $3,800 in attorney fees, almost double the initial amount awarded. The invoices indicated that McAdams still had not moved out entirely as of February 8th. McAdams posted on his Facebook page the first night, it was a photo of his cat and dog on his mattress on the floor. It is dated January 10th at 10:05 PM. On January 13th, he posted photos of himself with his cat and dog on his mattress on the floor. The photos are dated January 13th. On February 4th, at 11:00 AM, he posted a photo of his cat and dog in a field. The field looks like the one next to the King County house near Freeland Road. The next day, McAdams posted another photo from the same location. Today, I shot a photo of the dog, of his dog, at the same location. I've taken photos of Scott McAdams' Jeep at this location in King County, near Elburn, every morning from February 28th through this morning. I have seen McAdams' Jeep at Tom Riley's house once, Saturday around 3:15, maybe a mail pickup. I shared with the city council an email conversation with Herb Rubin to Bill Nicholas dated February 1st. Herb Rubin states that he has not seen any sign of Scott McAdams at Tom Riley's house, nor has Kate Norrico, Tom Riley's neighbor on the east. Maybe, Herb, if you're watching, you need to drive to King County near Elburn to walk by Scott McAdams' residency so he can talk face-to-face. It is time to vacate the 5th Ward seat. A mailing address is not residency. Ward 5 deserves an alderman who lives in the ward, much less one who lives in the city and economy. He shouldn't be, I didn't know that King County is part of 5th Ward. Thank you.
All right, then we have Ms. Martinez.
Maybe again?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I want the minutes to finally reflect that I'm reporting ongoing intimidation and discrimination against Hispanics. At the February 26, 2024, DeKalb City Council meeting, I, Hispanic victim and witness of intimidation, was deliberately prevented from speaking during the public participation period, which corroborates this intimidation is ongoing and includes withholding of official action and independent investigations. At that meeting and at previous meetings, the DeKalb city mayor, the city and city attorneys stood by and clearly abused their power to dissuade a witness where my brother was repeatedly threatened with arrest, to falsely accuse me of criticizing my brother of trespass and harassment for asking for police reports and criminal investigations, and took action against me at every meeting, exposing me and my brother to hatred, contempt, and ridicule, and causing action to be taken against me and the withholding of official action, which are verifiable illegal acts of intimidation. Like my brother, I'm being prevented from filing criminal charges, for instance, against Mayor Cohen Barnes, Councilwoman Carolyn Morris Cesada, both candidates for the 76th District, and the DeKalb city manager, Bill Nicholas. We are demanding independent and criminal investigations. City of DeKalb has investigated city managers before. There is a clear precedent, just not when it comes to Hispanics. Thank you.
All right, then, Mark Charbot.
Well, looks like our mayor kind of learned his lesson this time. I want to comment about what happened during public comment at the last city council meeting. What was, it was absolutely unforgivable what happened. You had a member of the public who came to address some serious concerns about racism, misconduct, discrimination by this city, its mayor, and the city manager. Now, I don't fully understand the background of her claim. I'm not going to comment on that, but she deserved to be heard. The speaker addressed the city council regarding claims targeting minorities and misconduct. The meeting minutes you will approve state the following. Mayor Barnes interjected, stating the speaker made her case at the February 12th, 2024 council meeting, and at this point, she is out of order. Your exact words, Cohen. Tell me how this is out of order. A citizen can say anything he or she wants. A citizen can repeat anything they said at the last meeting if they choose to do so. They are not out of order. One can stand here and recite the alphabet if one chooses. You are given your three minutes. You do not have the right to silence anyone. Every citizen is responsible, of course, for his or her own words and has to answer to that. That's absolutely understandable. You can criticize individuals. You can call people names. I don't recommend that. Again, you are responsible for your own words, but you are allowed to do that. That's how this country was built, on the freedom of speech. In the middle of the comments at the last meeting from the speaker, our overzealous mayor asked to recess this meeting in the middle of her comments at the 1 minute 32nd mark. According to the meeting minutes, Alderman Perkins moved to recess the meeting, seconded by Alderman Larson by voice vote. A majority of those council members present voted to recess the meeting. Fortunately, we have one wise Alderman here, Alderman Cesada, dissented from that. That's reflected in your minutes. Thank you, Carolyn. The rest of you should absolutely be ashamed, especially Alderman Perkins and Larson, for motioning and seconding Mayor Barnes' request. You further add credibility to RM's claim of discrimination. It says a lot about both of you. Perception is reality, something I've lived on all my life. Every boss I've ever talked about said that is the case. Secondly, Mayor Barnes, you talk about decorum at meetings. Please follow your own advice. What's good for thee is not good for me seems to be what you are doing. When people walk here, walk up here to speak, stop interrupting speakers when they talk. You've done it for about two minutes right now. I applaud you. I think you're getting the message. For the public watching, don't let this bully mayor crush your rights. You have the right to not give your name. You can criticize anyone, and you have your right to the three minutes. A request for review has been filed with the Illinois Attorney General's Office for a possible OMA violation. And for those of you who voted to shut down the speaker from the last meeting and recess the meeting, you should all be ashamed of yourselves. Friends, neighbors, future investors, along with moms, dads, and the kiddos are all watching. You should be setting the right example. Do better. Proudly DeKalb. Thank you.
Then, let's see, I think that was our last one? Yes. All right, so moving on to Agenda Item F. Yes, sir.
I have a quick question for the attorney. Is living rent-free in someone's head, does that count as residency in the ward? Never mind, I don't want to. That's a rhetorical question. Never mind, I withdraw it.
All right, Agenda Item F, Appointments. We have public participation by Norden Gilbert. And Mark, you had F2?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Did you say Norden Gilbert?
I did, yes.
I thought you were done with it.
Public participation. Hi, I'm Norden Gilbert. I live in the 2nd Ward, and I'm here to talk about the Human Relations Commission. I have served on the Human Relations Commission for 32 years, most of which I was chair. In December, I, along with two others, were informed that we would not be reappointed. That is totally appropriate, for the mayor not to reappoint commissioners. However, three months later, those positions still have not been filled. I am confident that if we were asked, we would have been willing to remain on the commission until our successors were appointed. As to meetings, we used to meet every month. That was changed to every six months. In 2023, we met three times. The commission, well, yes, we met three times, and the commission has not met this year at all. There are a number of issues that have come before the city in the last few months, the nuisance ordinance, the issue of migrants, and those are both issues that the Human Relations Commission should have been called upon to help the city deal with these issues. But unfortunately, because there are only three members on the commission at this point, we don't, they don't have a quorum, and that can't happen. So I wanted to bring that, those issues to your attention. The Human Relations Commission has been around for, I think, almost 50 years, and it's an important part of our city. Thanks.
Thank you, Norden. Mark Charbot.
I appreciate Norden for speaking, kind of echoes a lot of my concerns. The fact that we have no appointments tonight is very troubling. At the last meeting, I stood here and pointed out that the HRC is missing members due to the mayor's decision not to reappoint two members. I made a mistake. It was actually three qualified members that the mayor did not reappoint. I misspoke. Norden Gilbert, Lisa King, and Nadine Franklin all faithfully served the commission and were absolutely blindsided by the mayor's decision not to reappoint them. In fact, Ms. Franklin only got to serve three years because when she was appointed in 2019, the commission did not meet in 2020. So she only barely even got one term. Problem with that, they all wanted to continue to serve. This topic was a point of discussion at Alderman Walker's ward meeting last Thursday. Let me tell you, the people in attendance, this is my impression, were not happy about this. In fact, Alderman Morris even expressed at city council meeting in the past that she has heard from her constituents as well. There is concern about this. At the ward meeting, it was also mentioned by the HRC chair and Alderman Walker that they've been approached, a combination, when you add both together, by about eight individuals who have asked to be considered and wanted to step up and serve. The mayor has not acted, and the commission still does not have enough members to function. When I brought up the remarks at the last meeting about the lack of appointments, the mayor, in one of his many interruptions, said the following, quote, "Appointments will be a part of the next agenda." This is reflected in the February 26 meeting minutes, page 3 of the minutes you will approve on the next item. The mayor said, again, "Appointments will be a part of the next council agenda." Well, here we are. It's the next council agenda. None. What do you not get here? We are at the next meeting. Please be honest with people. That's in your official meeting minutes you're going to be voting on. You said there would be an appointment. There is not. Let the record reflect that. Thank you.
All right, then, moving on to Agenda Item G, Consent Agenda. Number one, minutes of the regular city council meeting of February 26, 2024. Number two, accounts payable and payroll through March 11th, 2024 in the amount of Number three, investment and bank balance summary through January 2024. Number four, year-to-date revenues and expenditures through January 2024. And number five, Crime Free Housing Bureau report, February 2024. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. Any comments or questions, counsel?
Yeah, I have one.
Yes.
So, why haven't we gotten more people on the HRC?
It's been expressed to me by multiple council members that we need to have a discussion on the process of approving future council members or future commission members for each and every one of our commissions. We've got some appointees that I'd like to make to the library board as well, or one appointee that I know for the library board, and we need to be able to sit down and have that conversation. So I was just telling Alderman Verbic before the meeting that since that's the, what I'm hearing from counsel is, you don't want me making recommendations, so we're going to work together on those. We're going to come up with a vetting process for how we're going to bring commissioners forward in the future. And obviously, I think the ordinance says it's ultimately, I do appoint, but I would love to be inclusive and have all of us participate in it. And since counsel has been giving me that direction individually, until we have that discussion, we'll have to wait. And it'll be April is when we're actually going to have that whole discussion. It'll be on the council agenda.
Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Cesada.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
A I.
All right, consent agenda has been approved. We have a public hearing here for a substantial amendment to the 2020-24 CDVG Consolidated Action Plan and 2024 CDVG Annual Action Plan. I'm going to go ahead and call the public hearing, the order at 6:22. Is there anyone here that is present to speak on this issue? Hearing none, city manager, do you have anything?
Just to say, this is part of the process, as indicated in the background, by which the federal government puts its hand on the action the council took in November to extend a grant of $125,000 in CDVG monies to the Opportunity DeKalb Board for the project launch pad. And we're getting very close. This is the last major piece that we have control over, then it goes to HUD for final review, and hopefully by the end of the month, we can proceed and issue the grant.
Awesome. Counsel, anything from you? All right, hearing none. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:23. Moving on to Agenda Item I, Considerations, we have none. Moving on to Agenda Item J1, standby. Can I have a motion to bring, or, sorry, J1, which is Resolution 2024-027, authorizing a Fund 400 Architectural Improvement Program, AIP, economic incentive for the property at 818 West Lincoln Highway, Next Generation Development LLC Junction Shopping Center. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. City manager.
Just some brief remarks, if you'll indulge me. For one thing, just for the people in the audience, and people might be looking in, we have a TIF district in which we have been giving up to $25,000 for architectural improvement projects. This is outside the TIF, but a couple of years ago, the council thought there are some commercial areas that maybe could be improved, but for the TIF in the past, they haven't been able to get going, or the lack of a TIF. And so, we expanded that program, put $100,000 into it, as we have in the TIF companion, and that's what's in play here. Okay, to the point. Next Generation is not a new company in these halls. They've been before you a number of times, going back to April of 2020, when the firm, which was then doing business as New Med Partners, was issued a special use permit by this council to create an adult use of medical dispensary in our Junction Shopping Center, which is at 818 West Lincoln Highway. At that time, you may recall, and I addressed it a little bit in the background, there were issues at the state level, some of them legal, having to do with the issuance of such licenses. And it took a good two years before the Cook County Circuit Court of Appeals lifted a stay on the issuance of licenses. And then, it was a bit of a competition to see who, how the remaining licenses and some new licenses that had been authorized by the governor's office would be able to be executed. So, it wasn't until mid-2023 that Next Gen with an equity partner was able to secure the license and get going. They're in process right now. They've done the gutting of what used to be Finn's Limited, if those of you have long memory, and Store. Their building permit indicated they were going to be spending over $1,000,000, $1,087,000, in fact, to build out this area with the required state conditions for the execution, finally, of the license. A lot of electrical, plumbing, mechanical, and structural upgrades, which in themselves will exceed $365,000. So, they have applied for the AIP program that allows a 50% reimbursement for those essential mechanical upgrades and ADA upgrades, and also structural, all of which are in play here. I feel that this is a very appropriate use of the AIP money. We've similarly granted $25,000 to the competition on Locust and North 3rd Street. So, recommend this to you, and if it will help in getting them open and open in a timely fashion, I think it's a good thing for the city.
I have to apologize. Mr. Charbot, you want to speak? I had everyone in J3, I'm sorry.
I want to state that I welcome this new business to town, and I wish them tremendous success. My concern is with the funding request and the source of the funding. This is more of a city council issue. I don't blame the business for requesting the money. The background material states that the funding would come out of Fund 400. Now, the 2024 budget this council passed in December states that Fund 400 is defined as the capital projects fund. DeKalb motorists pay 10 cents, approximately 10 cents a gallon, 9.5 cents a gallon to fund this. The 2024 budget dictates the following, the exact words. The local motor fuel tax rate of 9.5 cents per gallon is split between road expenditures, airport expenditures, and vehicle replacements. Proceeds from the local tax on motor fuel can be used for any public, I want to stress public, capital improvement. The cannabis dispensary is not a public capital improvement. This is a private business owned by a private entity on private property. Again, I welcome the dispensary to town, and I hope it generates tons of needed tax revenue, but this use of motor fuel funds for this purpose is inappropriate based on the definition and intent in the 2024 budget you approved. Fund 400 should be used for our crumbling roads. Now, the other dispensaries, the mayor pointed out, yeah, they were approved for funding because they are in the TIF district, and they were eligible for TIF funding. Doing some research, I found the city has inappropriately done this in the past using Fund 400, and this needs to stop. Again, using Fund 400 for this purpose clearly goes against the policy this council adopted in the budget it approved. So instead of using fuel tax revenue to fund a pot shop, use the money for its intended purposes to fix potholes. Thank you.
I figured you had a little follow-up there, city manager.
Yeah, clever but off the rails. So, the Fund 400 has a balance which has been built, as it was indicated, by motor fuel tax, but also other sources. Refunds go in there, interest goes in there, local state grants, local and state grants, excuse me, apart from motor fuel tax. And in the day, a couple
for any public, I want to stress, public, capital improvement. The cannabis dispensary is not a public capital improvement. This is a private business owned by a private entity on private property. Again, I welcome the dispensary to town, and I hope it generates tons of needed tax revenue, but this use of motor fuel funds for this purpose is inappropriate based on the definition and intent in the 2024 budget you approved. Fund 400 should be used for our crumbling roads. Now, the other dispensaries, the mayor pointed out, yeah, they were approved for funding because they are in the TIF district, and they were eligible for TIF funding. Doing some research, I found the city has inappropriately done this in the past using Fund 400, and this needs to stop. Again, using Fund 400 for this purpose clearly goes against the policy this council adopted in the budget it approved. So instead of using fuel tax revenue to fund a pot shop, use the money for its intended purposes to fix potholes. Thank you.
I figured you had a little follow-up there, city manager.
Yeah, clever, but off the rails. So, the Fund 400 has a balance which has been built, as it was indicated, by motor fuel tax, but also other sources. Refunds go in there, interest goes in there, local state grants, local and state grants, excuse me, apart from motor fuel tax. And in the day, a couple of years ago, we actually had loan proceeds going in there. So this is built out of the balance. The council voted to have a, an allocation for this year that where the expenditures to try to speed up some projects would exceed the overall revenues. And so we're building basically a project here. We're funding a project on the basis of the balance. So it's perfectly in order from a fiscal standpoint, a financial standpoint, in terms of all the prevailing state and local requirements.
Which is probably why every year we pass our auto.
It's important. We spend a lot of time going over the budget every year, and so it's, if people have concerns about that, they should attend these meetings.
All right, on to the $25,000, or no, yeah, the $25,000 request for architectural improvement programs for Next Generation. Any comments or questions on that? Hearing none.
Catching up.
Sorry, what?
Where are you? Oh, you're doing it.
Yeah, I'm just, it's council's discussion now. So I think we're good. So I'll just call roll then.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Eight I.
Resolution 2024-027 passes. Now, number two, Resolution 2024-028, authorizing a Fund 400 Architectural Improvement Program, AIP, economic incentive for the property at 1204 South Fourth Street, American Legion Post 66. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City manager?
Thank you, mayor. The American Legion Post has approached us to replace its outdated wooden signage down on South Fourth Street, 1204 South Fourth Street. As the background explains, this also would be a project that would qualify for our Fund 400 AIP program. The council, about two months ago, authorized the replacement of a sign for a church on Grove and South Second Street. Similar kind of thing, replace an old sign, bring up a sign that will have some change, electronic change copy, excuse me, yes, copy. And it will have to conform, obviously, with our codes and zoning and otherwise for size and the fact that it can't be distracting to drivers. But the proposal, again, this one, we have about $230,000 out of the fund reserve that's being dedicated for other purposes this year. And if you put all of the AIP grant requests, which can go up to $100,000 this year, we're still going to be less than half of that allocation. So I think this is in order and recommend your approval.
Council, any comments or questions? Yes, Alderman McAdams?
Before I need, I think I need to, I'm not sure if I need to recuse myself or abstain. I apologize.
I think abstain, because we're both members.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to do. So we won't participate in the discussion, but we'll just abstain during the roll call. We don't need to leave the room, though, right? Yeah. Alderman McAdams?
I just want to say it's always a privilege and an honor to give something back to our veterans, because they've given so much to us. And I'm looking forward to voting yes for this.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Zasada?
I'm abstaining.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Abstain.
Six I.
All right, Resolution 2024-028 passes. We have public participation for J3. But actually, Yusri and Steve, we'll probably call you up if we need to, if that's all right. So just hang tight, because that way you can have more than three minutes. So with that, if that's okay with you guys, we'll give you time to speak here. We have Resolution 2024-029, approving a package liquor license for Fourth Street Market LLC, doing business as Fourth Street Market, located at 802 South Fourth. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor? So, second. Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City manager?
So, it comes before you as a request for a liquor license. Initially, it came to me some weeks ago from, as a request from the current owner, Mr. Michaels and his family, who were wondering if a convenience store could be reopened there and what would be required. And we talked a little bit about having to visit with the building department and so forth. And then, in a subsequent conversation, Mr. Michaels and I met with the intended purchaser, who's here also in the audience tonight, Yusri Katum. And Ms. Katum has in mind the idea of, again, bringing back the convenience shopping that had been there for many years under Whitehand and then under 7-Eleven until 2022. And in addition, wanted to put in a deli service, so have some deli foods there, but also make sandwiches, maybe even have some tables and chairs. And he said, would it be possible for me to also have some six-packs there, or as people are grabbing sandwiches and grab a six-pack to go home on the weekend, or whatever it is? And I said, well, that's something we have to look at. I looked in code, and there are a couple provisions in the code that deal with packaged liquor service, which is what that would be. And what it gets down to is this, and I've mentioned this in the background, the, if you have a packaged liquor license, if the council were to approve this, then all of that space would be considered the protected space, which means only persons 21 and over could come in there. So you won't have people under 21 coming in to buy candy bars and snacks and the like. So that cuts down on some of the walk-in trade or the drive-in trade. But the intent was, as Mr. Yusri presented to us, and so I said, I'll bring this forward. The existing code allows for the whole area to be considered packaged liquor, but packaged liquor, it does not have to be the only thing sold out of that space. Now, the verse isn't true necessarily, but you can have a packaged liquor store and still sell food items and snacks and the rest of that. And it doesn't preclude the possibility of a deli. So I brought that to you. That's, those are the parameters that are in your code. And otherwise, it was a straight-up request for that, with, within the context of the packaged liquor provisions in your liquor code, Chapter 38. So, bring that to you. Let the city attorney address this, but I think if the other conditions are met, then I assume the license shall not be unreasonably denied. Is that correct?
Yeah, the classification allows for, which our liquor code would, assuming that there's not an issue with the school, then that would be the judicial standard.
And I looked at that, the, and the city attorney can confirm, so that it's the distance between the buildings. Initially, I thought it was the distance between the building and, say, the property line. That is the case if you have video gaming. Remember, we went through that on South Fourth Street with the laundromat a couple of years ago. But in this case, not with, on the packaged liquor side. So that's what I know in terms of facts. The current owner and the prospective owner are here to speak to you tonight, and I think you should hear them out.
Yeah, so Yusri and Steve, if you want to come up, feel free to spend at least six minutes, which would have been your time. But if you can keep it to, you know, a little brevity, that'd be great. And then, if you don't mind after you're done talking, just stay up here in case council has questions for you, so they can get them answered, if that's all right.
Thank you. My name's Steve Michaels. My father purchased the building in 2004, when it was a Whitehand, and then ultimately, ownership transferred over to 7-Eleven. My father passed away about 10 years ago, and since then, it's been the primary source of income for my mom. She can't be here tonight because she's ill. And then, of course, COVID hit, and 7-Eleven vacated it. And in discussions with them about renewal, they said that they were not going to plan to do that, and that lease expires this year. So I've been working with Yusri on selling him the property, because he's got a great vision on what he wants to do with it. And I think it's a, it's a good plan. So that's why I'm here tonight, to support Yusri and anything that's necessary from you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, for the introduction. Hello, everyone. And my name is Yusri Katum, and thank you for the opportunity to come speak for you today. Just to give you some background about myself, you know, my wife is actually a graduate, 2014, from NIU, so we have a strong connection to the community there. I also acquired Sharks Fish and Chicken Restaurant in December of '23, that's across from the NIU campus. And I closed it for renovations for about three weeks. And, you know, I'm going on my fourth month now. Had a very positive response from the community, and, you know, very excited, you know, for continuing to operate and connect with the community there. I've also had owned and operated prior to that Papa John's Pizza franchise in Montgomery. And so, you know, my vision, why I'm here today, to talk to you about the property on Fourth Street. And, you know, what I'd like to do there is, you know, open it very similar to a 7-Eleven convenience store today, but, you know, under my own independent name, and carry, you know, household essentials like bread, milk, you know, sandwiches, and, you know, other items for the local community. And, you know, my intent is to, I think on that side of town, there's not a lot of options in terms of, you know, food or snack items. And, you know, my belief is that if I can help fill a need for the local community there, it'll help make my business successful. And, you know, that's, that's what my plan and vision for that. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have or elaborate on anything further.
Council? Alderman Perkins?
So first, thanks for your interest in Decal. Huge fan of economic development in Decal. But I want to listen to anything that literally anyone has to say, especially when it's considering the Fourth Ward and Fourth Street. Really interested in that. My concern, and my concern and questions are, you know, and input that I've gotten from people has been pretty clear, resoundingly clear. Everyone is a huge fan of the thought of a deli, and bringing that in. What no one is a fan of is another liquor store. So how critical is liquor sales to making this thing go? And I think that, and I'll add one more thing, I have some trouble. I think we may have a gap in the code, because I like the business angle of what you're saying. And I think in a lot of other areas, it makes perfect sense. If you're in Germany, I think you wouldn't have any trouble finding someplace to have a beer and a sandwich. But our code is set up where you either get a packaged liquor license or you don't. And in the packer liquor license... Liquor license, you could be selling vodka, anything, you know, anything within that purview. So, we've got some other issues we're dealing with that result in shooters laying on the ground. And we do have a school over there. So I'll just go back. All that said, I'll go back to how critical is liquor sales or beer sales in making your business model go?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that question. I think it's a good question. I think for my vision for, you know, reopen as a convenience store, I know that 7-Eleven, you know, here in Decal, you know, doesn't carry a selection of beer and liquor. But in my local community in Montgomery, which is just west of Aurora, you know, many of the 7-Elevens there, you know, do have, you know, beer and, you know, alcohol beverage section. Regarding that, the specific location on Fourth Street, I can't speak to why 7-Eleven closed the store. But, you know, in my plan to reopen it, you know, I'm looking to, you know, as a small business owner, independent, to give myself and customers a selection of items to help, you know, make the business more successful. And it's, you know, my belief is that I think it would help the business. You know, as far as how critical it is, it's sort of how my vision is centered around, to be able to have, you know, a small selection of everything, to have traffic to the store. You know, to do it alone, I don't know that if I'll end up, you know, going the same route that 7-Eleven did there and end up closing.
Because here's my, here's my favorite concern. You know, if we agree to do this and give out a liquor license, my fear is just this. If the sandwich business doesn't go well, it would be easy to flip it to just a liquor store. And then we've got another liquor store that no one is really looking for, and it's in the shadow of the school right there and multiple others. So, the, when I first heard of it, I'd heard of it in the deli side of things. And that's awesome. I love it. But then, when you get right down to brass tacks and the black and white, what we're approving is really a liquor license. You know, so I've got a lot of reservations about that in life. And the feedback I've gotten from folks in the ward is clear. No one's looking for another liquor store. And I know it's not a liquor store, but that's the hoop to jump through to make this go.
Yeah. And if I may answer on that point, you and I look at the general area. It's, you know, my belief that, you know, food and snack items are really underserved in that area.
Absolutely.
And so, I think to focus on beer and liquor would be a mistake in that store, because there are many other options, you know, around. And, you know, I think more so people want the convenience of having, you know, food or snack items close at hand. So from a business standpoint, it just, I don't really see it necessarily as being, you know, that it would work. I mean, the, to rely on one particular item when you already have, you know, a lot of competition in the area, I think it makes it, you know, more difficult as a business versus to differentiate yourself and do something a little bit different than what everybody, what everyone else is doing. But...
Alderman Zasada?
So, it's interesting you bring up the difference, right, in Montgomery. A few years ago, we looked at having liquor at gas stations, right? And so we reviewed that, and we were looking at our code and looking at changing the code to allow liquor at gas stations again, or alcoholic beverages, whatever. And part of the issue is that I think originally we, this was done in the first place, way back when, to prevent college kids having easy access to alcohol. I'm thinking was the original intent of not having it at gas stations. And so, I don't know, maybe, you know, once I'm done, this is kind of an elaborate question and explanation at the same time, city manager. But, but that was one of the purposes, I believe. And so that's why when you go to our gas stations, there's no alcohol there. And so it is a unique feature. And then we considered allowing gas stations to have it. But then, my perspective when we did that was that we have created a unique weird market structure where we must have liquor stores to have alcohol anywhere, basically. And so then, by adding the allowance to have alcohol at gas stations, we were kind of harming this market that we had created by basically putting liquor stores out of business, all by the design that we created in the first place. So, I don't have, that's not necessarily to speak to your situation, but I just want to throw that concept out there, because we reviewed that a couple of years ago, and it was kind of a unique, interesting situation. So I suppose, so city manager, maybe you can answer the question. So, so gas stations are not allowed to purchase a liquor license, period?
And I think for the record, too, I remember bringing that agenda item forward, it was to clarify and have council agree, no liquor at gas stations. It wasn't, we were looking and trying to move in that direction. It was actually the opposite.
It wasn't a proposition, let's do this.
Let's not do this, yeah. But I don't know the original intent of why gas stations don't have it. I don't know. Yeah, I know.
You know, we could go afield.
Google will probably have it.
Certainly also, so we have this unique situation, right? We're licensing a certain kind of service, a certain kind of sales. And we don't license lots of kinds of sales, snacks, for instance, we don't license that necessarily. But we, by licensing, we control private initiative, right? And so, we said initially, decades ago, this gets to your suggestion, we're going to control this market, and the quid pro quo is, but we're not going to frivolously expand the market under our control, that you have nothing to say about. You're just going to have to deal with the competition that comes. And so there's always a little bit of a temper there. But at this point, it's, it's gone a long way from a couple decades ago. So this is the context we find ourselves in. Chapter 38, which gives the rules of the road, really needs a thorough going from top to bottom.
Sure.
But that would take multiple, many multiple council meetings. But that would take multiple, many multiple council meetings, many times. And I think you're well aware of that, people in the audience are too. It starts at the beginning and works through about 20 different chapters in it. So, for, for this, this was an anomaly, but it was a chance to open a store that's been long vacant or underserving the, the local market. So, when, when liquor came up, I could see from the standpoint of the entrepreneur here, the business owner, well, I'm trying to maximize my chances to, to make a living. So that's, that's how we got to this point right now. We're working in a framework that's not ideal.
And before City Attorney, we have a lot of conversations here and I've heard repeatedly, let the market decide. So here we are in a, an environment where we let the market decide. But that's why some of these things are getting brought before, where we're a little confused or we're split on what it is we want. So it's for us to have this conversation and decides. City Attorney first.
Yeah, I think one of the concerns, to address all the Alderman's concerns about the whole store becoming a packaged liquor license store, is that the liquor commissioner has to approve what's called the premises plan and the, the business plan as part of, you know, as after the license is done. You could restrict the actual area of, that is allowed to be served, you know, for packaged liquor as part of that, you know, the liquor commissioner's approval of the premises and plan. So it's not, you know, for example, I don't know what the square footage is here of, of the place, but you could say that only, you know, X amount of that could be reserved for packaged liquor. Now, that doesn't resolve your concern that it's only going to be, you know, if the deli business goes out, then it's just liquor. But it does say that, that that could be, it's not just a full store of liquor, if that's a concern that you had.
Can I have Alderman Larson first? Okay, Alderman Larson.
I just have a question. Can we make any other kind of limitations? Because I thought at one of our recent votes that we kind of did a morph of, of what was here. And so to me, I, I can see picking up a six-pack or even a case, I mean truly packaged, but I don't want to see a basket of shorties sitting there that you can just stick. I mean, to me, if it's like, you're like, I'm picking this up at home, I'm going to grab some sandwiches, some chips, some beer, I'm going to go home and whatever. I'm okay with that part of it, but then I'm not okay-
Gentlemen, we're going to need some of your insight onto this question, so.
We'll just vote it.
Okay. Well, no, it's the, the, I mean, if I can sum it up, Alderman Larson.
Absolutely.
Could we issue a license that you can't have shorties? That's an oversimplification, but-
Can we make it very specific? Can we morph something where it's like, you can have a liquor license?
We're just, we're charting new territory here.
Yeah.
The commissioner and the council have never together done this, but I'm just visiting with a, sorry, City Attorney to find out if it could be done. Because we had talked before this about a conditional, a condition set on the license, but we've not done that. So I didn't bring that up to you. Obviously, that, that's a little, that's a twist that may go a little bit further toward what the council's concerns are. And the City Attorney telling me, yes, that's possible, maybe, what is it, 2,700 square feet?
A little north of 2,500.
2,500.
And then as part of the business plan, they would, they would show the liquor commissioner what, what type of liquor they are selling?
We do that with tobacco goods in, in certain stores, as you well know. And certain square footage not to exceed a certain percent of the overall area can be dedicated towards tobacco sales and then beyond that, it's for both.
And we just did this with the tattoo place last meeting in a way, trying to be more specific. But then we did have the whole conversation that there's no enforcement there. So-
May I ask a question to the council? If you feel, this isn't fair, but it's on the minds of some people in the room right now, probably, if you feel there is some chance of your interest in that, if we were to set this over and bring back a proposal that the council could consider, specific proposal, after visiting with the, the owner and the prospective owner, would that make sense to you or do you think there's, there's just no chance of that?
Alderman Perkins.
So, so to me- I like the thought of the business model. I love the thought of being able to go in and grab a sandwich and go home and grab a Budweiser and have that. But I can't in good faith get behind something that could ultimately end up being a liquor store on the corner. So if there's a way of, of limiting the scope like you're talking about, I'm, I'm all- Here's with that. But, but there has to be some limitation, you know, it can't, it can't evolve, it can't move down a path where ultimately ends up being a liquor store. You know, that's, that's my, my fear and the clear feedback I'm getting from, from folks in the ward.
So then, yeah, so Alderman Perkins.
To that point, someone did contact me from Ward 6, this is not my ward, but is the liquor commissioner able to moderate the type of signage at the building? The concern that was approached, that they approached me about was this, the vinyl signage advertising your favorite beer or spirits plastered all over the, the building. And again, I'm not sure what is possible, but that was just, that was the only concern brought to, to my attention, so.
How about to the rest of the council, is outside of this what we're talking about, are there any comments, questions, or objections to if we could modify it, if we could restrict it? Because I'd hate for staff to go through this process, bring it back to us, and we vote no. Alderman McKenna.
So, I want to bring up that empty buildings are bad for business. We can't redevelop Fourth Street with empty buildings. I don't drink alcohol myself. I grew up in an alcoholic household, so I appreciate the dangers and the ugliness that come with alcohol. Having said that, we need traffic on Fourth Street if we want to redevelop Fourth Street. And if we keep saying no to everything that comes up because we're waiting for the, for example, the ice cream shop, that we, I had a resident ask me if I could put an ice cream shop in there. Until we get an ice cream shop, we're going to leave it empty, then that's going to be, have a negative effect on the neighborhood and that the, that building will sit empty forever. So I'm leaning towards yes with restrictions, so.
Alderman Perkins.
So one, one more point to clarify, because your points, points valid. And I think if we- Dig into the, the why has it been empty for a while? Well, I think the owner is a little more motivated to find a tenant for it now because the lease is no longer paying. So, this is the first option coming before us for the property. I'm confident they'll find something in there. And I don't mean to discount your business model, I love it, I'm behind it, but I think there's going to be other options, you know? And I don't know that for a fact, but I feel like that because it hasn't been actively on the market for a few years, right?
Well, perhaps I can respond on that. So, 7-Eleven and I had discussions quite some time back. And when I knew that they were not going to renew the lease because of obvious business implications and what, what's going on with their business, I was informally trying to find tenants for that location. And the constant thing that came up was something about a liquor license.
Okay.
Usri had the aggressiveness and the vision to say, I really think that we can get over the goal line with this. So I've taken it, it's to your point, and I, and I don't mean to disagree with you, I've tried everything. And I know you guys want that building filled because it's not good for the community. I need it so my ma has income. I'm trying to do whatever I think's best. If this doesn't happen, it's going to be very, very hard to find. I've tried to find a tenant for there. I've tried to sell it. It's just not working.
Okay.
This is the closest I've come, that's the reason why I'm here tonight and why Usri and I have, you know, kind of partnered on this to say, I really think he's got a good vision and it's going to be good for the city of DeKalb.
Alderman Sazada.
My only hesitation, so I, I'm fully on the fence with this on both sides here. And my only hesitation with yes with restriction is, is I just don't want us to be making up all types of new special restrictions for every business that comes around. Like, it's just tedious and I feel like it's not business friendly. But at the same time, of course, I'm like, oh my gosh, kids are right there. So I'm, I'm feeling very much both ways with this. And so, yeah, I mean, I, I suppose the best solution is perhaps with restrictions, but I don't love that as a pattern of our behavior as a council.
Alderman Larson.
Just one thing, I could be wrong, but I swear when I was in college, like, years ago, that there had, there was like beer and wine. That's all you could buy at certain things, that it wasn't a full liquor store, like you couldn't get hard stuff. You could just go in and get beer or wine. Now, for something like this, that more matches a sandwich and something to drink that you're almost making a meal out of. And then it kind of takes away shorties, it takes away pints, it takes away the hard stuff, and it really just gets more about having something with the meal. Do they have anything like that anymore?
Yeah, we would have to create that classification.
Yeah, it's a new one.
Now, the, the way around that right now is, is if there was a business model plan that said that I'm only going to serve this type of liquor and I'm only going to serve liquor, if I have the deli running and the liquor commissioner approves that, then that's, you know, that's your way around it unless you change the code, right?
Alderman Walker.
Hey, first off, I just want to say thank you for even, you know, bringing this to the table because, like everybody knows, I work for UPS and there's no lunch spot. Like, I need a place to sneak my Doritos and I just can't, you know? But, um, so you said you have a business in Montgomery. I deliver out there a little bit too. So, there's a gas station like right on 47, like almost right, right before you get to Yorkville. I don't know if you're familiar with it, but it sounds like you kind of want to do model it after what they do. I don't know if you know what I'm talking about. But if it is, I mean, and I understand what Alderman Perkins says, you know, about, you know, the shorties and not wanting to be a liquor store. However, I've seen this store do pretty good, you know, selling shorties and pints and all that. Now, for me, if I were you, I kind of like your vision for the simple fact that I don't think you just want it to be a liquor store. I think you wanted the sandwiches to come, because listen, consider, Bill Nick, the City Manager knows this, my wife is always trying to get me to help her do a sandwich shop. So she probably wants me to vote no, but I love the idea. So I get it, you know, the sandwiches and, you know, if you want to pick up, because hey, I get shorties on the weekends and I don't, you know, drink them and throw them in a parking lot. I go home and I take a shower and I put some ice on and I sit down, I turn Netflix on and I enjoy it. So not everybody's going to be a criminal who wants to drink a shorty. So I get that. Now, to piggyback off what Alderman, but Perkins said is, we, we just don't want liquor stores on every corner because we already have that situation in the North Andy Glidden area. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that. However, we're trying to build up Fourth Street because there's nothing over there. Like, there's a lot of things I would like to see, like a bakery, I would like to see a car wash. You know, those people deserve something because we put so much interest in the, the north side of town. We're not doing anything for the south side. So for that, I thank you and I'm going, I'm going to run with this. I think, you know, you've got a pretty good vision, so I don't need any limitations. I'm going to trust you to maintain it and do what you're supposed to do and don't let it turn into a alcohol, you know, just an alcohol shop. And I don't want no hoolums hanging around there in the parking lots, literally. So I'm going to lean on both of you if that was to happen. If I pushed it, yeah, Mr. Owner back there, I'm going to be leaning on you as well if that is to happen. But I like the idea. I like the idea.
Thank you.
What I'm, what I'm hearing then, City Manager, we'll push it back to you. We'll work out a way to have some of the restrictions based off of what you heard tonight for council.
I'll bring you some options and we'll get it out so people can respond to it as well.
We love to execute things and we'll execute as fast as we can, but obviously, we need to take our time on some. So we'll get this done as soon as we can, but it will get pushed, the ordinance to the next city council meeting.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You'll need a motion to officially do that.
Oh, say that again?
You'll need a motion to continue it to the next meeting.
Okay, I would take a motion to continue Resolution 2024-029.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Sazada. Okay. Roll call.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Sazada.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
89.
Our Resolution 2024-029 has been pushed. Do know, we really want to figure out how to make you successful in this. I, I'm proud that we're a very business-friendly council. We will work hard to that, but we do have to make sure we always represent the best interests of the city of DeKalb and the residents of the city of DeKalb. So, thank you, gentlemen. Have a great night. And you don't have to stay. You can go if you want. All right, moving on to Agenda Item K, ordinance is second reading, we have none. Moving on to Agenda Item L, ordinance is first reading. Ordinance 2024-017, publishing the official zoning map of the city of DeKalb. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Larson. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As I say in the background, this is a state requirement and it's up for your approval tonight. All the new map shows are the changes that have already been made that are listed in the chart below. So we recommend your approval.
All right, any questions or comments, Council? Hearing none, roll call please.
Verbic.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Sazada.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
79.
Ordinance 2024-017 passes on first reading, I take a motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams.
Yes.
Okay, any comments or questions on that? Hearing none, roll call please.
Walker.
Yes.
Sazada.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Verbic.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
79.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2024-017. Moving on to Agenda Item L2, which is ordinance 2024-018, approving an amendment to ordinances 1997-036 and 1997-037 to allow a 55-plus residential community for the villas at Bridges of River Mist, River Mist by Granger LLC. Can I have a, sorry, before, I'll wait. We have public participation here. So I'll just call you all up. I just want to remind everyone, you have three minutes during your time. Jeff, can we get a timer? Perfect, all right. The first person I have to speak on this is Alexandra Daly. Good evening.
I'm Alexandra Daly and I am a resident of Bridges of River Mist since 2010. Since 2012, I have served on the HOA board. That's a long time on board, but I have, they had the opportunity to watch the board grow and the, the community grow and come up with ideas of what we're going to do. During these years, the board has experienced many challenges. Three minutes isn't sufficient to dwell over past concerns, but I won't take three minutes because that's not why we're here. I want to address the present and future use of our land. The subject is the vacant 35 acres community called Phase 5. It's been called other things too. This land has sat vacant since the inception of Bridges of River Mist and was deeded to the HOA in 2021. Going forward, RVG marketed the property and Brian Granger answered the call. Granger proposed a 55-plus development, which was welcomed by the majority of the residents. I am in favor of going forward with the villas of Bridges of River Mist by Granger. Please approve this so the development can go forward and we can complete our community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, then I have Scott Speer.
I live at 3367 Comstock in River Mist. I am the current president of the, sorry, I'm the current president of the HOA and was on the board and president at the time that we went through our development plan, et cetera. I'll address a few of the comments from the planning commission and some emails that we've gotten. We had a very open and honest process involved. We had three meetings that were open to all homeowners. Brian Granger and our realtor attended all of them to answer questions concerning the development, the state of the real estate market, especially single-family homes, which is what this originally was zoned for. Some of the concerns addressed were traffic, which Brian has addressed multiple times. Single-family homes, I, I heard the comment that they were never mentioned. I was at all those meetings and they were mentioned. I was at all those meetings and they were mentioned. The final comment, we've had a lot of questions on what if this doesn't go to completion? Well, none of us can answer any of those questions. Sometimes things work completely, sometimes they don't. All I know is that land has sat vacant for decades. We've been through three owners. The last two LLCs we were involved in lawsuits with because they were purchased by the LLCs knowing that they were supposed to pay us HOA dues or negotiate. That happened, but then eventually concerning both of them, they backed out. We had long drawn-out court cases. We were eventually deeded the property and the only developer that approached us was Brian Granger. No single-family home developers. There's no infrastructure in the community, so there's going to be great expense. We negotiated with Brian and I think we came out with what is a fair agreement for both of us, and I speak for the board and the majority of the community as the vote was 184 to 53 to approve it, and I think we should keep this moving forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Speer.
My name is Brian Shaly. I live at 455 Quinlan Avenue in River Mist. I and several other people spoke at Planning and Zoning Meeting on March 4th in opposition of the 55-plus development that is being considered here tonight. The four of us who spoke made a coordinated argument against a proposal with most of our points being, we felt largely ignored by the commission. First and foremost is the fact that the proposed proposal presented to Planning and Zoning was not the proposal that was voted on and approved by the residents of the HOA. Several changes were made and several omissions were made that I believe would have been instrumental in changing the outcome of the approval by the residents. There are proposed 22 lots on the perimeter of the property facing Larkin and Comstock. These lots are shown in the current plan as 80 to 90-foot frontages currently with 11,000 to 14,000 square foot lots. These proposed lots are now 60-foot frontages with 6,000 square foot lots. This just adds to the overall density of Phase 5 and a removal of the already lowered green space of the area that is proposed. It just doesn't match the existing upscale property that Bridges of River Mist now enjoys. It will squeeze the homes together closer and the view from across the street will create a dramatic train, change. This is just one example of the changes that were made between the two proposals that are different. The most egregious change in omission is the fact that the association fees are being waived for this new development. The prior owner and LLC was prevented from moving forward, building 85 upscaled homes on the site because they were sued and a lien on the property was placed for not paying annual fee of 80-plus thousand dollars per year on unplotted lots that are still zoned far. Several thousands of dollars in legal fees on both sides of the argument was spent, resulting in a return of the property to the association. The association has now, has a contract to sell the property to the petitioner and waive those fees until each home site is built, which is what was requested by the original LLC that was sued. In five years, as an association, we as an association will lose in fees all the money that the land was purchased for. If the original builder had the same deal without the litigation, those homes probably would have been built by now and the fees would have been put in paying status. They'd be paid up. The place would have been built. I know this may not have any meaning to the city, but the Planning and Zoning Board mentioned often that Phase 5 is a beautiful empty field and should be built. It can now be built as originally planned in 1997 because the HOA board elected-
Time's up, Mr. Shaly. Sorry, sir.
Oops, I didn't watch.
Yeah, I got to hold everyone to it, so.
I apologize.
All right, no worries. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Pamela Sanders. I live in the Bridges of River Mist at 437 Larkin. I'll be right across the street from this new development and I am wholeheartedly in support of it. There are many benefits to the city, obviously, with increased tax revenue, job creation, keeping spending dollars local. For me, however, it's a little more personal. As we age, we are stare, we have to stare down our own mortality and hopefully I'll be around for the 10 to 20 years that it'll take to build this development, but the decisions we make and the ones we support are also part of our legacy. And this development will ultimately provide the future financial health for River Mist, which is a community I love. It will also provide people like me the option of staying in DeKalb if I want to downsize. I want to stay near family and friends and it will give me and future generations, whether it be Gen X or millennials, Gen Z, or whatever letter they assign, the option to stay as well. There's no community like this currently in DeKalb and I truly think it's a missing puzzle piece. It's needed. I want to commend Mr. Granger for his new design plan, actually. I don't know of many builders that would actually remove units for the benefit of a nicer aesthetic. It does make for a smoother transition from single-family home to this development and as long as design style and building materials are used to differentiate the south side of the street to the north side, so there's no consumer confusion as to which community these two developments belong to, I think that's important. There's also, there was a question in the Planning Commission that where would these people come from? And what that translates to me is, is this community marketable, which is important. I just want to note that we have a local builder who's established, has a proven track record of success, especially in this very targeted market niche. He builds a very high-quality customizable product. It will be located in a neighborhood of custom homes with beautiful grounds. Medical and wellness facilities are literally about a mile up the street. We have a revitalized downtown area with wonderful restaurants and improvement. Thank you for that, by the way. Well done. We have beautiful parks, golf courses, recreation facilities, and over the next 10 to 20 years, only 225 units will be made available. So, I think this is a highly marketable project and I hope you all see it as the absolute jewel that it is and help it move forward because I'm totally for it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Mike Carpenter.
Good evening. So, I'm Mike Carpenter and I, I'm the managing broker for RVG. We have the subject property listed and I'm in support of the project. A lot of people say, well, of course you are, you've got it listed, you know? But, just to give you a little background on myself, I, I'm from DeKalb. I went to DeKalb High School. I graduated from Northern. I raised my family in the community and I've spent my career here. I'm 25 years in the real estate business. So, we took on this project, this assignment in 2022 in the springtime, so we're coming up on two years of working on this project. And we've had not a lot of inquiries, but we have, we have had some inquiries for a new facet of commercial real estate. You're seeing a lot of rental communities. People can get more rents, higher dollars if they, if they build houses and rent the communities. So, we had some of that. When Brian Granger and I sat down and talked about his development, you know, I thought to myself, boy, it's a good location. I'll echo some of, some of the comments in regard to good location, close to medical, quality product that we seem to be lacking. Granger's been successful in Genoa and Sycamore. A lot of people, when you get to be seniors, and I'm one of them now, you start worrying about, well, where are your kids going and how do we get close to our kids? So, I think that for River Mist, people that actually live there and are thinking about downsizing, what a great deal just to be able to go to Phase 5 now and, and live in a retirement community. They can still stay in town. I also get concerned about not having the product. Are we losing residents to Genoa and Sycamore and the Fox Valley, Geneva, St. Charles? You know, I think we are and I think as the baby boomers age, you know, there's been more and more senior housing developed. So, I think it's critically important that we have some and I, I think this is a, it's a great location for it. So, I'm supporting it. I've also been through the numbers. When we took on the assignment, we priced out through local contractors, excavation, roads, water, sewer. The cost to develop those lots exceeded, you know, 55,000 a couple of years ago and that was, that's with no cost for the land. So, you know, we started getting into, well, what are these, are these going to be 80, 90,000 dollar lots? What about the cost of construction, single-family homes? Costs have really escalated. Is this something that's going to be too, you know, not affordable for our marketplace? And I think the answer at this time is yes.
Thank you.
So.
If you can hand them out, we'll just pass them around, ma'am, so we can keep moving. Corning Secretary, I'll hold on mine so you can have it for the record.
Hi, I'm Sandy Anderson. I live at 537 West Quinlan Court. I get to be a resident in the Bridges of River Mist in Phase 4 and also a citizen in this fair city of DeKalb. Out of conscience and support for many residents that voted for me in November of this last year, I am new to the board, the HOA, and many of them expressed concerns to me regarding Phase 5 being changed to a multi-unit tract-like housing area. Since Mr. Granger utilized two of his due diligence 90-day timeframes given to him by the board, I waited to see what would we develop and I did not have a position other than I did believe a 55-plus unit, 55-plus community was important in the city of DeKalb. I am in favor of development of anything that will bring more tax revenue to this city. I'm just not sure this is the location and so I waited and then became involved in expressing the opposition and the concerns about this project. So, I want you to, I want to first say, Mr. Granger presented at the zoning meeting his 22 smaller single-family homes as a buffer between the existing larger single-family homes and lots on Larkin and Comstock. In the last two days, I've talked to 10 out of 14 that are involved on Larkin and Comstock. I want you to look, first of all, according to him, Phase 5 is going to be exclusive as its own community within a community, Phase 1 through 4. Then we simply would like to ask the city council to request of Mr. Granger that he be willing to assure that the single-family homes, if this goes through, will face into the community along with the driveways rather than it face out into Larkin or Comstock and that the backyards have a buffer of a beautiful berm with trees and bushes. Two reasons. There's already berm all the way along Bethany Road and the Sangamon entrance by the elementary school. To continue it along Comstock and Larkin would enhance the development. It would provide the buffer from the construction zone site, which is protected to last, look at your second page, 10 to 20 years from being an eyesore to the existing homes on Larkin and Comstock and neighbors driving through the subdivision. A lot of this is about how is it going to look? What are we going to have to deal with for 10 to 20 years? Just our questions. The berm also would provide much-needed green space. We do have wonderful berms around the Bridges of River Mist. It's one of the things that attracted my husband and I to that initially, among other things. Then, secondly, I would like you to look at page two, well, this is the timeframes, I'm sorry, and then page one. The proposed construction entrance has the potential for more accidents entering off Bethany and turning onto Cutler and entering at Comstock, three turns as opposed to having a single turn-
Ma'am, I have to cut you off, ma'am. I'm sorry, that's three minutes.
Oh, sure. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right, then I have Patrick Hord.
Hello, my name is Patrick Hord. I am a member of River Mist as well. I'm on the HOA board. I'm a lifelong resident of DeKalb County, been in the city of DeKalb for 25 years and River Mist for the last six. I live on, I don't know if I said this, I live on Larkin Avenue, a little bit down from where the development would occur. As a resident of the city of DeKalb, I've been extremely encouraged by some of the growth I've seen over the last few years from the new business development on the south side of town along 88, as well as the revitalization of the downtown area. One area that has seemed to lag in the, in the city has been new housing development other than some of the executive condo buildings that have went up over the last few years. For the last 25 years, this property has sat dormant and certainly the various owners would have developed it had the market been there during that time or sold it to somebody else who would have developed it. If they didn't do it, the market did not exist. As some of the other speakers have indicated, this was put, marketed to all developers to come and take a look at, see if they're interested. The only serious offer we got was from Mr. Granger with this 55-and-over community. We had multiple communications and open meetings with the entire association. Lots of questions were asked, lots of questions were answered, and at the vote that occurred, the homeowners overwhelmingly supported the change to the amendments which allow this community to be built in this property. Mr. Granger will be held accountable to following the amendments that the association has voted to approve. I'm here to say that I agree with the community's vote and there are three main reasons I personally support this development. First, the development will cause no increase to the costs of these homeowner associations' fees that we have today. All the land Mr. Granger would be taking over this development will be supported by his internal association. Meanwhile, as these units get developed, we will increase the number of houses which will be paying into the association.
And I got you got one minute left, Patrick, just so you know, since the timer's not working.
Okay, that's fine. The net effect of that is that the dues for all the residents will be less in the future than they would have been without this development. It's nothing but positive for the HOA. The school district, no new kids will be coming in, property taxes will be coming into the community, sales taxes, as well as more people to support our local businesses. And the last thing is, as some other people have indicated, this seems to be a area of our market which is currently untapped, the 55-and-over community, especially with a little bit higher-end properties. As people have indicated, if people want that today, usually they're looking at Genoa, they're looking at Sycamore, or they're looking for further communities from DeKalb. So, to sum it up, I think the Granger proposal is a win for the HOA and I think it's a win for the city of DeKalb and the community at large, and I encourage the city council to support this development.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Sorry about the timer issue. I think that was three minutes, so it works good.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Bob Brown. I live at 3130 Cover Bridge Lane in River Mist. Our next-door neighbor gave me a note to read to you all. They have health problems and that's Gary and Holly Gresholt at 3140. We have a segment of our community who are aging and maybe looking to downsize, yet would like to remain in this perfectly located beautiful community. Many neighbors have expressed interest in the project by visiting other Granger communities. Having visited Old Mill Park in Sycamore and River Bend in Genoa, we are impressed with the quality of the construction and the amenities and conveniences for an aging population. So, that's the Gresholts. Now, my wife Diane and I have lived in River Mist for five years. We've been active in the HOA, not, not in the Homeowners Association Board, but as active participants in almost every meeting, and boy, this has been discussed. Nothing's been hidden that I could see. Everything that, that's been presented has been criticized real time and answers have been given to all of us at any meeting. So, I'm surprised when some people might throw out the fact that things are being done fast and loose. That's not the case. This is our sixth house that we've lived in. So, we've lived around the United States, this is our sixth house, for five years now in River Mist, and we're in our 70s. So, by the time you get in your 70s, I listened to that one young lady, by the time you get a little bit older, you develop a laundry list of the things you want in a house, right? One of them, of course, is right sizing or downsizing, but another one is, you know, you want these kind of materials, you want this kind of layout, and you know exactly what you want by this time in your life. You know it. And what- And what we found in Mr. Granger's properties in both Genoa and, and in, in Sycamore is he's got his finger on the pulse for what we really like. So not only do the price points look attractive, and we're hoping that the price points as well in River Mist do as well, but, but the construction and the layout and the design look outstanding, too. What does this allow me to do, us to do? It allows us to stay in River Mist. So if we're able to transition from our current property, which is a, which is a ranch house with a walkout lower level, to, to a new property in the fifty-five-plus community, we can still use the same churches, the same, the same service providers, the same grocery and clothes stores, the same doctors, dentists. Are these important for seniors? You're damn right. And will this be an attractive proposal for people looking at DeKalb and looking at fifty-five-plus? Absolutely. I think that man's really done his homework. Dentists, hospitals, libraries, Ellison's Bakery, who would leave the area but for Ellison's Bakery? Let me see if there's any, any other hype point here.
You're about it.
Thank you, I want to appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Greg Davis?
Well, good evening, and thank you for taking a few moments. I thank the City Council and people that are interested in this project. I am interested in this project. I live at three-nine-nine Larkin Avenue. I've lived for twelve years in the River Mist community. Three-nine-nine Larkin is right across the street from this thing. Every day I'll be able to look out and see the types of buildings that are being built and the roads that are being built. And let me just tell you a little bit in history. I have been around DeKalb since nineteen ninety-three. I was not born here, but I got here as quick as I could. It's a lovely community. It's got great things that are attractive. But one thing is lacking, there are several things that are lacking for people that are getting to this stage of life, where they're trying to figure out what to do, what to do with mom, what to do with dad, what to, how to handle that, that staging. So the Granger communities have been answering that question for a lot of people. They have, I've been to the informational meetings, folks have had their say. Some are not going to get their way, and that's unfortunate, but you can't do both. I think this is the best thing that is for this property. It is the highest and best use for this property. I will share that my thirty years in construction, finance, nonprofit work, community events, I've seen different proposals come into DeKalb, and I've seen some of them chased away because they couldn't afford to do all the infrastructure. They couldn't afford to put quality materials and things, but the projects that they have proposed for this site are perfect. It's absolutely a good idea. I'm for this because it's a good plan for the area. I'm for this because I've reviewed his other projects. I've seen what his other work has done. And it's not hard to stand up in front of a council meeting and propose ideas but not accidentally perform. Brian Granger performs. His stock shows. He takes care of binding together that intricate maze of homeowners, community, and good construction and good business. I would also add that this is the kind of housing stock that DeKalb needs. Its design targets people that have an affordability issue, and he's going to make it possible for many people's dreams to come true. I moved from one part of River Mist right to this Larkin area just about five months ago, and I will tell you that I'm glad I made the decision. It's a good decision. My wife and I, we downsized preparing for our latter years, and I look forward to this council saying yes. Let this project go forward. Help out our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. And then Dan Steiml.
Good evening. Now, my name's Dan Steiml. I live on Wolf Court in DeKalb, which is in Bridges of River Mist. I've lived in DeKalb all my life, and since two thousand eleven in Bridges of River Mist. I've served many years on the HOA board and currently as a vice president. I'm here to speak in favor of Brian's project. He is a top local builder in the community who has survived and thrived through the years, especially in this fifty-five-plus market. Over the last few years, as many have said, our HOA has held several meetings, open meetings, to discuss this project. Brian even held some open houses at his other sites in Genoa and Sycamore, and many of us had the chance to go and visit those, and I was impressed with those developments. There will always be, and as a result of these meetings, just to reiterate, that we did have a vote by our community, and it was seventy-seven-plus percent in favor of it, and that's really important. There will always be some that oppose anything. A few don't want a large, open vacant lot to change, but it was always supposed to be developed. It was never, to finish off the neighborhood. I believe that many residents in the Bridges of River Mist will eventually move over into this fifty-five-plus community when they choose to downsize. This is a project that DeKalb needs, and I hope that you'll show your support for it and vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I would take a motion to bring ordinance two-zero-two-four-dash-zero-one-eight approving an amendment to ordinances one-nine-nine-seven-dash-zero-three-six and one-nine-nine-seven-dash-zero-three-seven to allow a fifty-five-plus residential community for the Villas, Villas at Bridges of River Mist, River Mist by Granger LLC. Can I have a motion to bring it forward?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alvin Smith, seconded by Alderwoman Zizada, City Manager.
At this time, Mary, do you want the petitioner to speak, or do you want me to speak?
Whatever you think is best. And if you want, you usually like to tee it off, but I'm happy to have that.
I could, I, I thought petitioner could speak to his project more-
Yeah, perfect.
-more intimately, but I can also speak to the context that's been focused to this point.
Why don't we just have Brian come up and give us a little introduction?
And then I would like to have comment after that.
What's that?
I'd like to have some comment.
You will have some comment, okay?
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. I feel like everyone has stolen my thunder, so thank you, everyone, for speaking about the community. I, I was, first of all, I'm excited to be here, so I'm from here, born in DeKalb. I started in business here twenty-nine years ago. We've built about seven hundred homes, townhomes, condos, in DeKalb County, you know, in, in the surrounding area and in DeKalb. But in, in your packet, there's, there's a kind of a detailed, a few pages, and I was going to just touch on a few things there. Let me see if I can with this. Oh, here, here we go, that's, that's the project there. But just a few things I wanted to, to touch on, just a few of the communities that we, we did. So back in two thousand thirteen is when we started doing fifty-five-plus, and one of the big advantages is a very stable market, you know, in, in all economies. So it, it, we started with Somerset Farm, and, and so that community, all through kind of those worst times that I think we're all familiar with, it never had HOA dues fall behind, people didn't lose their homes, and, and so it helped to maintain the, the value and ultimately caused it to recover, you know, I think, much more quickly than, you know, other housing products. But we started in two thousand thirteen in, in the Somerset Farm community. Two thousand seventeen, we started a Hickory Terrace community. Two thousand eighteen, we did a few more communities in, in Genoa, and then Old Mill Park in two thousand nineteen. And a few people have talked a little bit about if there's a need, and, and I, I can just speak to, you know, what our experience has, has been, which I think experience is many times better than a study. But, you know, in, in Sycamore, we've been doing this for about nine years, and so we've permitted one hundred and twenty-four homes, which works out to be just short of about fourteen homes per year or, or condo units, and it seems to be a pretty consistent demand, you know. In, in Genoa, we started that a little bit later, so we've been doing that about four years, but there we've permitted about eighty-eight homes, or a little bit over twenty, I think, twenty-two units per year. So we continue to see the, the demand for, for, for the homes. But if I could, just, just for a minute, just go through a few things, I don't know if you guys found that packet, but just the, the products that we use. I know a few of the people toured our communities, which I, I really appreciate. Anderson Windows, you know, they're, they're all masonry. That was one of the concerns of the association is quality. You know, they, they have a very nice community in, in River Mist, quality homes, fountains, bridges, it, it looks very nice. And, and they, they've maintained landscaping, you know, when, when you come through, and so that was a, a big concern. And so, so we, we talked about landscape standards, and, and our, our standards were already consistent with, with what, what they do. Where our, our clients are very interested in landscaping as retirees, they're very focused on landscaping, but they, they wanted the buildings to be all masonry, which we already do. So that's, that's another, you know, I think, big asset or big plus that really was a standard for us already, with a, a big focus on low maintenance. And so, in the next few pages, there's a couple of exterior renderings, and, and these are communities that we, we currently are, are working on, but it kind of shows the, the brick exterior, similar elevations.
And Brian, do you have slides on this? Because people at home get to see them, or no?
They, they-
There's a slide on elevation.
There, hold on, let's see here. We'll, I'll go back and forth a little bit here. Yeah, this, this is, oh, hold on. Yeah, the slide deck is a little, little different than it was before, but I have a few of them. So, so the, I, I don't have the ones we're talking about here. And, and just, just quickly, there's, there's a few interior elevations that we'd just like to showcase all the design flexibility with built-ins kitchens, whether people prefer traditional or very modern, they have the opportunity to, to design and, and make changes. So that's really what I think is exciting for somebody considering the home that, that most of them plan to stay in for the rest of their lives, you know, so. Another focus is the large showers, walk-in showers. Our common shower we, we do is four foot by nine foot six, so really large showers that of course are accessible as well. You don't have to step to walk in, but, but they're, they're just exciting and, and big. A few slides, just talk about the landscaping here, and I apologize, we don't have these to show you. But, but getting back to this project now, that, that last page that you guys have there, the printed letter just shows some of the fountains and stuff that's consistent with what River Mist does and, and what we have in, in one of our communities is, as well. But the subject property here, I'll, I'll go back, is, is highlighted there. Just wanted to put that up, so, and just to make sure everybody's clear where the property is. It's on the curve of Bethany Road. So, here now, see if I can, so, so this, this we would consider to be the main entry. So we, we would look to bring people through the Covered Bridge entry. It's really designed as a main entry, there's fountains and, and everything, so the main en, entry here, and then, but we would consider this to be a second en, entry, would also serve as a construction access. But there, there's already existing berms, and we, we look to keep that in place as much as possible coming around the, the bottom of the project here. And next page here is the clubhouse. So the, the clubhouse in a lifestyle community is really a, a big part of the focus. And, and so the clubhouse that we're proposing here is about eight thousand square feet. There, there are botanical garden space outside that allows kind of just people to relax and walk through. There are also pickleball courts, bad games as, as well. And, and really, I, I think with fifty-five-plus, sometimes what you find is you, you need to just plan for some flexibility, because what we think might be popular, so sometimes there's something else that's interest. So, so really, the residents kind of lead that. But right now, pickleball is very popular. We'll also have two indoor pickleball courts. Let's see here. So, so this, this is clubhouse that we're doing in Sycamore, so it would be a similar footprint to this clubhouse, but we would actually have two indoor pickleball courts. There's a few more homes, and, and really with the rising interest in that, it's, it's, it's really been very popular. Other things in, in the clubhouse is a large clubroom, that's just kind of your main gathering space, parties and things like that, which connects to a large outdoor patio space that's screened in, see-through, you know, big stone fireplace. But there, there's also a library, it's more of like book club, more of a quiet space if you wanted to get away from the, kind of that, that main area. There's, there's a lounge, you know, for billiards or table, table games. Fitness space as well with a, a fitness equipment. But then there's also a yoga or stretching studio, which also can serve as a flex space, and then a little bit of office space is reserved there. But what's nice about the pickleball space, it also can serve as a flex space, it's really a large room for larger events. But really, the residents, I think, shared a lot about the, the need and, and the fact of who, who would live there. But we, we see for existing residents, it's a great opportunity to be able to move family closer by, or for existing residents to, to take, take advantage of moving to the fifty-five-plus community. And, and we, we still find other fifty-five-plus communities that there's, there's still a lot of people that come from out of the area seeking this, this very type of, of housing product, so the lifestyle community. Let's see here. You know, I was going to touch on density a little bit, some people had said that this, this wasn't, you know, what was proposed, but, but it's actually a lower density than we had originally talked about. We, we had envisioned about two hundred and fifty homes, the, the, you know, the number of homes is the, the cost of the clubhouse and central amenities divided by the homes. So the, the more homes there are, the, the lower the, the cost, you know, to not only build, but then to carry and maintain and take care of those central amenities. That also includes, you know, taking care of the, you know, it's taking care of the snow removal. And so, but, but so the original thought was, you know, it would be mostly all condos like the other communities that we're doing, but, but I thought adding the single-family to buffer the single-family across the road might be a nice transition. It did reduce our density from, you know, about twenty-five homes, but, but it, but I thought that would be a nice transition. Now, to kind of soften the impact of that, the, the, those lots are a little bit narrower, reducing the overall exterior maintenance, but that's the whole reason people are moving here, is to reduce the outside maintenance and maintenance costs. So the size of the home, however, somebody had said the homes would be smaller, but our agreement with the association, that, that's not the case. The homes would, would still have to meet the minimum square footage requirements, meet the masonry requirements, meet the landscaping requirements. So, so really, it's, it's more of like a reduced side yard, you know, would really be the, the difference, but they would be single-family, and you would not have a multifamily immediately across the street from the single-family. So I, I, I thought that that would be well-received, and that, that was why we, we made that, that As far as pricing, I have a, a little bit of information about that, but we, we have found in other communities that, that the, the product that we're building, you know, as much as we would like it to be less expensive, it's, it is expensive to build new homes now. And so we, we are offering some smaller footprints, which is a common trend all around the United States as the cost of build continues to rise. We, but we're, we're going to offer a few footprints that are a little bit smaller that will allow us to, to have some homes that, that we would hope to start with, with a two in it. However, the single-family homes, for example, at nineteen hundred square feet, wouldn't, wouldn't be anywhere- However, the single-family homes, for example, at 1,900 square feet, wouldn't be anywhere close to that. So the median sale price in River Mist right now is about 410 or 415. And a 1,900-foot ranch, which is our minimum size, there's just no possible way for us to deliver a that-size home with the style that we build. So the single-family homes would be more. And again, that's at a base price. So our current condos that we build, the, our base prices range from about 325 to 434 with a finished sale price of around 350 to 615. So our clients do like to customize and make changes. And so that does, can add to the cost. So we find quite a range in the changes that people make. So the homes will, it appears that the homes will very likely have an average sale price higher than the current median income and there's a current median sale price in the community. I think that is, takes me to the next slide here. And some of the association members touched on this, but I think another thing that strengthens the value in River Mist, in the lot sales and home sales there and talking with other people that have considered buying lots, the association fee comes up, you pay taxes, pay association fees. One of the big advantages to the community that we're doing is there's real two parts of this. So our community will start to shoulder those association costs. So each condo buyer will pay into the River Mist Association, just like every single-family buyer, because they get the same benefit. They get to drive into the covered bridge space, they get to appreciate the fountains. They live in the River Mist community, so they'll pay that same fee. So that is around, round figure about 268,000 a year that we pay into the association. Built out as a single-family, that's quite a bit less, of course, just less people living there. And my estimate of that is about 102. So, you know, maybe they'll find that those fees will go down as the revenue, as more people pay that. But in addition to that, our residents will then pay a fee just for the 55-plus community that then goes to plow the snow, cut the grass, take care of the clubhouse, have a part-time activities coordinator. There's a lot that goes into that, but to really give them that turnkey experience. You know, they don't worry about the roof, you don't worry about the windows and the masonry exterior. So I just wanted to clarify how those fees work. You know, I know some people brought up traffic, but it's the, the math on the traffic is that there would be less traffic and that, and I have my engineer here that can speak to that more in detail. But there's far less trips on average for retirees or 55-plus communities. But, you know, less likely driving in the dark, less likely driving in the rain, less likely driving in the snow, the less demanding schedules, you know, maybe they're working part-time or maybe they are retired. But, and I hear many people say, "Well, I'm 55 and I work two jobs and I work all, you know, I drive all the time." But when we say a 55-plus community, the average age isn't 55, you know. So you can be, you know, 55. But the average age, I'd say, is around 72, which means some people are older than 72, some people are younger. But when they do a traffic study like this, that's taken into account. So I would love to answer any questions that you have, and I try to go as quick as I can. But then also Kevin is here, if you had any specific questions about traffic on the engineering side.
I think our city manager wanted to say a couple of words.
Yes, if I may.
Yes.
Thank you, Brian. May as well just stay there if you want.
Yes, yeah.
So formally, this comes to you after the plan commission has reviewed the proposal and it's been reviewed at the staff level over a period of four to six months, roughly. What Mr. Granger's proposing and his team are proposing to do, as has been pointed out here by some other speakers, is a momentous advantage, an opportunity for the city of DeKalb in the sense that we haven't had more than, on average, six housing starts over the last 10, any year, the last 10 years. With the exception of what was referred to as executive apartments that have been built in the downtown area primarily, I mean, throw that in. The numbers look better, but in terms of outside of those particular buildings, it's five to six and of those, one or two every year are mobile home. And sometimes you get two mobile homes and a four-unit. So you're not even getting single-family, except for last year, we got four of those. So if you look at our economic picture, that is truly a gap and something that we've been wondering for a long time. We've tried to incentivize by removing the impact fees by moratorium. We've worked with other tax authorities to do the same thing. But that wasn't enough and so on. So here we are, and there is an opportunity to build out more families, more, in this case, probably couples and singles and so forth that are living here because it's 55 and over. The overall plan has been, you know, vetted and gutted and rebuilt and so forth by the staff level and with the developers' team. When it arrived at the plan commission, there were two principal concerns that were mentioned there, and I heard them echo tonight, although an interesting twist, we've heard some people who live right across from the proposed new wing of the Phase Five, I should say. And they're saying we are okay with the plan to have smaller, single-family detached homes. Here are the two concerns. One was the, in the initial plan, it showed a lot gate at the west entrance, which would be the construction entrance in the early going. And the development team has worked with our staff and at the plan commission meeting agreed to remove that condition, or at least I thought that's how it was reported to me, or at least would consider that. The city staff will insist on that and we insist on that to you for two very basic reasons. One is when we arrive, lights and sirens, we don't want to fumble for keys. And we're not, our rigs are pretty good, but our ambulances aren't made to plunge through gates. So we don't want it for that reason. The other reason is a traffic reason. If you look at the corner, Brian, you're going to have to help me with that.
Yeah.
Maybe over to the left up. No, I'm thinking up where Comstock and, yeah, right about where your arrow is. All we've asked is, and the city engineer is here to explain why, but ask to even out that curve there so that it comes in directly onto, I'm sorry, but onto Butler. So this comes in here, it's not going to cost a lot. This will make for a better intersection there. And in time, maybe there'll be some traffic control there, maybe there won't. So the other remaining thing that has caused some discussion in the community and in the room tonight is a transition from the existing homes on Larking to the interior of this Phase Five. And we've had some interesting and some different opinions we hadn't heard at the plan commission level. Someone said, "Well, how about a Birm? How about maybe cutting down on the density there? Building lots that are a little bit closer to the lot sizes of the houses on the north side." Soon that's the north, Brian, of Larking or the northwest or whatever it is there. The lots on the north side are mostly 80-foot frontage, I believe, Brian. Is that 80, 80, a couple of them are 85-ish?
I thought it was 60, but...
Yeah, I think that's correct.
Something like that, is that about right? So 80 was the minimum at the time when this, when that phase was built. And so what's proposed here is 60-foot frontages and lot sizes of about, what, 7,200 square feet, something like that, if I recall correctly, at a max of 60 by 120. And on the other side of the street, we have anywhere from about 10.5 to a little bit more than a quarter acre. So there's a difference of about 30 to 40% in terms of lot area. Now, that is a logical, theoretical planning transition from a less to a slightly higher density. And then there's a higher density inside. But I think for us, the city now, this isn't for the neighborhood and for the HOA, we're now looking for an enclave, we're looking for something that flows. And if that's the case, then I think some adjustment could be made in the lot sizes of detached, single-family on the south side of Larking. Just a staff opinion, there are people in the room who would disagree with that, Brian might disagree with that. And there are obviously economics to that. But it's something for you to consider and how you might feel if you were looking across the street. Some people said, "Looks fine to me," or some people said, "I like a Birm." The trouble with the Birm is now we're getting to that enclave again. We're separating rather than flowing. So if it's to be part of that community, it seems to me that's something that might be considered. That's all I wanted to add for your consideration. It's up to you on first reading tonight.
If I could add someone else to, as it relates to, there was, there's one board member that spoke about the Birm idea. But the board, one of the specific things that was kind of agreed to in working with them was that if there was multifamily on Larking, that there wouldn't be any driveways on Larking. And if there were single-family, that it wouldn't be the back of a single-family. So they specifically wanted the single-family to face the street. So that was a requirement in our agreement with them.
That's what we had, by the way, when I was voicing.
Yeah.
They would face Larking, just like the ones on the north side.
And as it relates to, really, we're talking about density. And so, you know, there's a cost implication. The people that we're working with are not looking for big lots, you know. And so it just, it just raises the price, you know, it's really, it's just math. So the, it raises their maintenance cost and their, their cost to build. But their maintenance costs will already be the highest in the community because they're single-family, you know, versus the multifamily. So to me, transitioning to a single-family, reducing the density, but just going to a narrower style lot, you know, felt like a good compromise when compared with, my original thought was to do multifamily, you know, there. But that's my thought on that.
Okay. Council, comments, questions? What, all the women in the room?
I just have to verify, so the single-family homes, they're a part of the 55-plus, correct?
Yes.
Because I do know, when you talk to like my children's generation of 30-something, they're like, "We don't want big homes, we don't want big yards to take care of. We want to have," you know, that's more of a life-work balance that they're trying to get. And so I don't even think that in another part of DeKalb, that these smaller lots and smaller homes would be a problem. I think they would be something younger generations are going to look towards. So I know that doesn't make a difference to you because it's 55, but I think you're going to see more of that.
That's really the national trend is shrinking.
One thing while you guys are percolating too, I had the opportunity to visit the Sycamore community. You want to talk about quality. I mean, literally taken aback, and I think Brian can testify to that. I could not believe the quality of these condos. The layout was amazing. I can see why these are in incredible demand. So some of the things that I heard tonight about people talking about when they toured it and the reputation that you have, from what I saw, I would agree 100%. What else you guys got? Alden Smith?
I'll just say, as a Realtor, I'm thrilled to see this coming to town. I'm thrilled to see higher-density living situations, especially that's been vetted by the community, supported by the community in majority, you know, at the 70% level. You know, the National Association of Realtors is pushing for, you know, mixed-use housing or duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes to make housing more affordable. And yes, love the 55-plus idea. So I'm very much in favor and thank you for doing all the hard work and due diligence and for all of the community doing the hard work and due diligence of making sure that this is going to be welcomed and fit in and flow.
Other members? Alden Smith?
After you.
After you, sir.
Go for it.
I too was over and spoke with Brian. I was probably there one hour, hour and a half. I know I was late for a meeting, wasn't I? I agree with what the mayor said, very, very well done. Kind of drove the area as well. I didn't see, I mean, they were pouring concrete and there was no disruption by one neighbor I talked to in the Sycamore unit. They, you know, they, it's very, they were all very cordial, I guess, your construction guys. The quality within it, when I told my wife, "I'm surprised I'm not moving today." So I will say...
Because you do qualify, right?
Yes. Yes, I do qualify. And I think a couple others on the council too. But yeah, just the quality materials, I was very, very impressed. I asked a lot of questions. I think it's a very good fit for that area. I was a little concerned about the density. Someone did bring up the density on Bratt, Circle and Catherine, but I think this is probably less. Density per square, per acre, am I correct, than across the road? Catherine, Circle and Bratt, right? The question, when I did, I know I can always stump you, but I think this is probably lower, right, Dan? Than three units across the road, which are considered River Mist still, right?
Or to the west, I'm sorry.
To the west, yeah.
The north and west there?
Yeah.
Still on the map.
Yeah, just up.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not sure of the density on that.
Okay. Those are all the curpents, right, those units? Okay, another story. And actually, I had, long story, I will say this. My wife was on the phone with somebody, "You probably lost a sale in Sycamore because you are building in DeKalb." I will tell you that, so...
That is actually a conversation right now.
Yeah, so I think we maybe are talking about the same person. So, yeah, anyway, I am for this.
Thank you.
Alden Walker? I'm sorry, Alden Perkins, he headed up.
My question is just really a simple one. If you look at the internal streets, so those will be part of the community and you all will maintain those for plowing and have responsibility for replacing those then, right?
Yes, those are, the internal streets are all private.
Are all private, but then outside, the city will still maintain responsibility for Larking and Comstock, right?
Yes, yep.
Okay. But it looks great to me though, it's impressive.
Thanks.
Alden Walker?
Hey, well, I just want to commend you because you've built a couple of my houses, so I know you do excellent work. So let me ask you this though. So on Larking Avenue, I see, okay, with the existing houses, you know, the frontage is 80 feet, but then I see across, you know, it's going to be 60. Has anyone complained about that that you may know of or...
Well, a couple of people, I mean, a couple of people spoke on the fact that they would like it to be narrower, or I mean, that they'd like it to be the same width or something like that. But I think that a couple of the people that live across the street also said that they thought it was a nice transition. But I think that going to a little bit narrower lot helps to meet the need of the intent of the 55-plus community. It also helps to transition from, you know, multifamily to the single-family. It's, a 60-foot wide lot is actually very common nowadays with the cost to build. That's what we're seeing, we're seeing single-family densities over 12 an acre. And it's interesting to see, but I've seen even more than that. So the naturally densities are going up a lot to try and, you know, get closer to a price point that works for the new buyers. But in this case, it's twofold. It is less maintenance, it's also less cost to build the home. But it's less to take care of and the main reason they're moving here is to have less to take care of. So that's really the main driving factor. You know, I was just going to mention one other thing too. I heard a... I heard a few people talk about the construction being an eyesore and a challenge, and which I think that's generally logical when we think of road construction and things like that. But I'll tell you, I very commonly get calls from my clients saying, "Can you tell me, like, when the crane is going to come, I'm having my grandkids over, and we're going to, like, do lunch," and, or tell them when they're going to dig that hole over there because they love to watch the tractors. And so, it's also, also people really love it, too, especially, I see people use it as an exciting thing for the grandkids, and they kind of have a front-row seat to really an exciting time as well. So, there's certainly dust and noise, you know, when you're building homes, you hear hammers and things like that. But it's also, there's also a lot of really positive in construction activity as well.
So, to go back to my question, nobody complained?
I, I think that a few of the people that are in the audience had actually complained about that they'd like them to be, well, really, they'd like them to be exactly the same as across the street would be their wish.
Well, hey, thank you, I think it looks beautiful. Hey, can I? I'm 48, so cut out my...
Yeah. We card hard, so.
Any other comments or questions? Great project, super excited about the investment in our community. So, I guess with that, I would take roll call.
Zazada.
Yes.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Burbick.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
ADI.
Ordinance 2024-018 passes on first reading. City manager, I know you made a recommendation to just pass it on first reading, but I'm hearing overwhelming support, I'm hearing overwhelming support. I mean, I'm not going to ask for it, but if someone would make a motion to waive second reading, I would take it.
So moved. Second.
All right, so to waive second reading for ordinance 2024-018 was motion by Alderman Larson, and seconded by Alderman Zazada. Any comments or questions on that? All right, hearing none, roll call, then.
Larson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
McAdams.
Yes.
Burbick.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Zazada.
Yes.
Mayor Barnes.
Yes.
ADI.
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2024-018. Congratulations, Brian, thanks.
Great.
All right, we're really going to wrap up quick, so if you don't mind just staying for a minute more, well, you can always leave. I just didn't want all of you to get up because it's just disruptive. But we'll do really quick council member reports, Alderman Zazada, you want to start?
Yeah, I'm going to make a longer report than usual, so I don't want, I don't want to bore people. All right, I'm going to be really, as fast as I can. I just, I have to acknowledge Norden Gilbert's comments at the beginning regarding not appointing new members to the HRC. I don't support the decision to not reappoint members to the HRC, and I feel like it effectively renders it ineffective. So, one, two, I have to address Ms. Martinez's claim of targeting minorities. This has come up many times in recent meetings from the same source. I do not believe that there is any targeting of minorities going on, and I believe that everyone in the council is acting in good faith, and the city staff is acting in good faith. So, I have to address that plainly. And if there was any of that sort of behavior going on, I would be eager to pursue and find the source and resolve that issue. Thirdly, finally, I'm done, ward meeting tomorrow, 4:00 PM at the police department. Oh, gosh, there's one more thing, I apologize. So, I have a ward meeting tomorrow, 4:00 to 5:00 PM at the police department. Last thing, I met with the Lieutenant Governor's Military and Economic Development Committee this week, very interesting meeting, lots of stuff to share, but I will just share one thing, I learned about the Lincoln Challenge Academy, which is a military-style residential school for youth aged 16 to 18 that is free in the state of Illinois, funded by federal funding and partial state funding. And it's just a really cool opportunity for students, and they have lots of openings. So, that's it, thanks.
Alderman Smith. Alderman Adams.
I just want to say that when you are invited to serve on a commission or a board, that is an honor, and it is a privilege, it's not a right, it's not a lifetime appointment, this isn't the Supreme Court. I understand that some people become comfortable in that role, and they may be invited to come back, but it's certainly ultimately, under our form of government here in DeKalb, the right of the mayor to choose exactly who's on the boards, who gets appointed, and who doesn't. That's all there is to it.
Alderman Walker.
Yeah, I want to thank everybody in the city who came to my ward meeting, I appreciate it. We discussed a lot of, you know, hot topics, you know, that I was able to sit down with the city manager and give him some feedback, so I appreciate that. Also, I want to congratulate the four all-state wrestlers we had over at the convo in the seventh ward, you know, I will, you know, say their names next time, but we're doing good things, that's all, you guys have a good day.
Alderman Burbick.
No report.
Alderman Perkins.
No report.
Alderman Larson, Alderman Larson, sorry.
Normally, I get to say, I got to see a swearing-in of an officer, and I missed it this week, so that was kind of a sad thing on my side. And also, I just kind of want to do a personal apology to all the citizens of DeKalb. Some of the behaviors, my behavior at last meeting, we sit up here as individuals, but we're a group. And as a group, I think we're all here to make good choices, we're trying to make transparent choices, we're trying to make truthful choices, and distribute clear and truthful information. And I kind of had it in my mind that if we just stay aligned with our moral compass, it would head us down the ethical and legal road. But this is where politics gets really sticky, because trying to do the good thing doesn't always make it the legal thing, and it definitely doesn't agree with Robert and his rules of order. So, with no forethought of malice on my part, and I don't believe any of our other members up here, proper protocol was not followed, as long as just good, good old-fashioned manners, let's go there. And fortunately, it shows you that my mother is still right, that you should take time to think things over one more time before it comes out of your mouth. But again, my apologies for my part in any behavior that wasn't up to DeKalb's standards.
Wilson. So, I'll piggyback on that, too. I don't react well to hate, I don't react well to erroneous accusations, and I definitely don't react well when people attack individuals. The city of DeKalb has an amazing staff, and sometimes when you're up here and you're hearing it over and over and over again from a particular individual or a family, you react poorly, and I did. By calling, asking for a motion to recess, and then putting some people on the spot, that caused us to behave not in the norm that we usually do. So, going forward, definitely will not be doing that. And I, I mean, we're all up here, we're all human, right? We all react differently at different times, we all have to remember, there's a lot going in everyone's lives, and you never know what the day might bring. But ultimately, it is up to me to make sure I conduct myself and help run a good meeting, professional meeting and an ethical meeting going forward, and I'll continue to do better at that. I will also be asking the audience to do better at that. Every meeting, I will remind people of, a measure of decorum would be great, because ultimately, when people present ideas, information, or even things they don't like, or things they don't distrust, when you do that in a way that it makes it easier for someone to be able to hear and understand, I think you get your message through a lot better. So, going forward, that's what I'll ask for, but like I said, I will definitely do better on my own. Things in the community, just really quick, I did attend the IESA tournament, as Alderman Walker said, my gosh, I mean, that, the, all right, then with that, agenda item N, executive session, we have none, and agenda item O, adjournment, I take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Perkins, seconded by Alderman Burbick, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Nay, same sign, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.